I'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, September the third, two thousand and twenty-four. And welcome everyone that's joined us here, some people from our public and our directors and other city staff. And we have four council members here, so we will get started in this work session. Our first one is introduction of new employees. You're gonna come, come, come up, it's Scott's not gonna take long.
Well, no, I'm gonna, I just wanna introduce kinda what we're doing here. So we've done this before, we're gonna introduce whatever new employees we could get to come today. We, as you notice, our agenda's pretty light here for the work session. So after we introduce the new employees, then we will go to reports. Stacy Martino wants to come and give you an update on what's going on in the library as far as programs, but she won't be here till roughly five o'clock, so we'll, we'll do department reports leading up to that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tristan has started working full-time with us just recently. He's worked with us for a few months on the part-time side. We had a position come open and Tristan applied, and I'll let him tell his story.
Hey guys, I'm Tristan. Vernal originally, kinda bounced around from Vernal, Price, a little bit of Colorado.
And you know how to ho- hold a door open, so I'm totally impressed. Good work.
Perfect, glad that was an introduction.
And so where did you work before here?
Um, I worked at Tim Daly Nissan South Town.
Okay.
Yeah, I was the sales manager out there for four years.
Oh, awesome, okay.
That's a long time to be a salesman.
Yeah.
It was rough.
Welcome to Pleasant Grove.
Thank you.
What, what's his job?
Uh, just whatever they need me to do on water.
That's a lot.
Water and sewer division.
Water and sewers, okay.
And he's about, what, a week and a half in full-time?
Uh, his, it was a full week on yesterday.
All right.
That's awesome.
Prior to that, part-time for about three, two or three months?
Two months, yeah, he hits two months on Sunday.
He had a trial run?
Yeah. Liked it.
Good.
He's showing up every day on time, ready to work hard. And so we appreciate that commitment out of Tristan.
It was a good change from the dealership, so.
Yeah, you're with a good, a good group.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's, uh, Chief Brown, you wanna start off here today with this, anything for us?
We're going right into staff business?
Yeah. Going right into staff business here, we're moving right along now, we're gonna be done here.
Okay. I don't have a lot, other than we have identified three potential, well, actually probable replacements for our police department. We're gonna get one or two officers from the sheriff's department, one has seven years, one has three years in the court. We should see them, one in September, one in October, a third individual that we like. We will probably sponsor him in the police academy, so we're hoping to get him enrolled in October. And we may see him around January, if we can get him in that class. So as soon as we find three, we have another retirement coming up. Sergeant Martel retires on October first, you'll probably see a retirement notice for him around the second or third, 'cause then he's going hunting forever. If, he has, so, but other than that, things are good in the police department. Nothing too big that we can't, we can't handle, so that's it.
Okay, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks Chief.
One thing while he's walking back, I, I do know that there are going to be some people that are gonna come to the open session, and they will be talking about the e-motocycles, e-bikes, and so.
There was a great post that went out about two hours ago on it, from Pleasant Grove City.
Oh.
Good work, whoever did that, probably Lisa. But, yeah, the one thing that I saw that, I saw that it was missed, was the motorcycle license, but that was added later. But it was a great post, so I know, I know you were involved in that, Chief, so thanks.
I'm gonna read it right now.
Well, I just, did we recognize the police is an integral part in us winning the city's golf tournament cup?
Yes.
Because that was.
Well, since Kelton was the ringer on the team, I figured he would have mentioned it.
I thought, I thought that was gonna come out, and I didn't know if the new recruits were, were vetted properly to make, make sure we retain that cup.
Well, it's the PD, we don't have to worry about it, might be other departments, we need to step up our hiring.
Well, I, from PD, I think none of those guys are the ones that are retiring, so I think we're good for a year.
For those that don't know what we're talking about, we had the city versus city golf tournament last Friday, so we were competing against American Fork and Lehigh, and Pleasant Grove City won the cup. So we are the champs for this year.
And next year, and the following year.
And hopefully, led by our police department, our city council team did well, and, and our Public Works team were the three best scorers that were counted towards winning that. We will be getting an actual traveling trophy that will be sitting in the mayor's office, so they gotta engrave it.
I'm getting texts, I'm getting texts about it.
That'll be good.
I think there's gonna have to be a team photo.
So, okay, so, you know, maybe the PD needs to add a question to their hiring questions, and are you a golfer? And what is your handicap? So, anyway, no, it's good, but thanks Chief. Okay, let's see what's going on at the library, so. Sherry. And I know Stacy's gonna be here and talk about upcoming events, so anyway.
Yes, so I'm actually going to let Stacy do the talking, but I thought I'd tell you why I suggested Stacy come do this. We had a staff meeting, and she got up with a big poster, calendar, and went through the month, but talking about why we were doing certain programs that were new and different, and, and she has such great ideas, but also great reasoning and passion behind her choices. And I thought, the city council needs to hear this, so that's why she's coming. But I'll, I'll let her fill you in on that, and you can ask her about Heritage Day, too.
Okay, the rec department. It's another building that's not very busy this time of year.
Running, I think Achilles tendon. It's either ruptured or, yeah, it's just, so I don't know why, and then I locked myself out of my house at the same time. I should just stop trying to exercise, so it was a good day. I'll, I'll find out, Thursday's a doctor's appointment, so we'll find out, but, anyway, so rocking the boot right now, looks really good with the outfit, but. Parks and Rec, we are just crazy busy, lots going on. Kylie's position, we have interviews for that tomorrow, so nine people that we're interviewing for, so, are interviewing with. So we'll hopefully get her replaced here real quickly. Kate Vest, I can't remember if I announced last time or not, but Kate Vest has started as a fitness coordinator. She's a instructor currently and has been with us internally, so great move up into that position, she's awesome. I feel like she's a good, kind of like, a lot like Andy. Can't replace Andy, but you also want a new Kate, so I think it's the best of both worlds, worlds there. But yeah, we're in the middle of getting all the winter sports started up, junior jazz is just around the corner. The adaptive sports, actually, we're in the middle of registration for that adaptive junior jazz, that will be starting in early September, well, about middle of September. So yeah, we're just busy trying to keep up with everything that's going on, so, and pickleball tournament's coming up, the Monster Mash. So that's coming up, we're excited about that, yeah. Yeah, Kylie will be, she's, she's gonna still be helping out a little bit part-time, so she's gonna still handle that. So she's got some really cool designs for the medal and everything coming up, so we're excited about that, but. So yeah, any questions for the recreation department right now?
Council?
Awesome.
Do you have dates for the Monster Mash yet?
Yes, off the top of my head, I don't have, I don't know what they are, but yes.
I just wanna get it in my calendar, so if you'll send it to me.
I'll send it to you, yep, I'll get that out, okay?
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Dionne?
I really don't have anything, Mayor, other than the fact that we really didn't help the team out on the golf day, and so.
We felt, we felt your support.
So hopefully, it was a good thing they only counted the top three, because we would have really added a lot of numbers to their score, so.
So I got a question for you.
Yeah.
So when are we gonna be changing the lights? We started that yet at the, at Discovery on the ball fields?
Yeah, so they came in on Thursday, they are, they were setting the poles at the footsaw courts today, and they plan on being out there the next couple days, installing those diamond lights. They may not get all of them completed before flag football starts, but we're gonna try to get them in and get them done. And also the shade structures, I believe they'll start pouring their first shade structure tomorrow, out of there at Discovery also.
And then, yeah, the, the poles look, the lights look good down at the new park, so it's gonna be awesome.
Yeah, they're, it's pretty intense, they, so when they set those poles, they're done. They're all pre-aimed and everything, they just set them, and they don't have to go adjust or anything, so it'll be really nice not to have them back on the facilities once they, they set those poles, so.
Yeah, playground, Discovery, did it get all done?
Negative, so they patched and left, they're supposed to seal. I've left two messages with him, so I'll see when I can get him back.
Like they left town?
I don't believe so, I know they had quite a bit of work here to do in Utah County and Salt Lake County on some other playgrounds, so a lot of repair work in both counties.
So I got one more question for you.
Yeah.
Since it's on our agenda tonight, and Scott didn't have an answer for me, but do you know how we came about having the Head Start program down at the?
Yes, so.
Were you around what and how that happened?
Yeah, so when we did Shannon Fields.
At the rodeo grounds, down at Shannon Field there, that building that we own. You'll find out about it tonight.
Okay.
So if you remember, the old Diamonds had two, there was two Diamonds in the score tower, and then the old JC building, it was called the JC building. Head Start owned that building. When we went to redesign the Diamonds and, and do the four Diamonds instead of the two, they approached us and wanted to know if they could have property to replace the JC building with a modular, and the city was in agreeance to that at that point, and then also their class size had gone up, and so the older modular building is owned by Mountain Land. The newer modular building is the first one you drive in, that is owned by the city, and they leased that building from us.
So, okay, well, that, now we know.
Yep.
So, thank you. Whoops, sounds like it's raining. Oh, let's hear from Public Works, there's nothing going on in Public Works, especially out in my street.
I just don't go that way anymore.
You don't, you don't go that way?
I don't either, and I live that way.
It's totally shut down, okay?
Let's start with that, let's get that out of the way. So it was scheduled to be opened, we got it open east-west with a temporary signal. The city felt it was in our best interest to add a large diameter storm drain pipe that was in the long-term plans to cross that intersection. So water's gonna come all the way from twenty-six hundred north and north, all the way down to the new Kindness Park detention basins. While they had that intersection torn up and blown up, we felt like it was wise to put a large crossing in there. So we had lined up everything to, to make that happen, and our friends at Dominion Energy, or now, what's their new name, Mayor? I can't remember. Who said that they had lowered and verified that their pipe was out of the way, in fact, and did not, and I'll throw them under the bus if anybody's watching, they dropped the ball for making that happen. So we had to open up the intersection and see that, and then we've left it. And when I say open it up, I mean dig it up, and so that meant closing the intersection. So the intersection's currently closed, Dominion is committed to getting that done on Friday, then we can come back in and perform that work, and then we'll open up the road, and we're scheduled to pave that first full week of, of September in, in all directions, and open up the entire section, intersection in its entirety. So we, we are behind, that'll put us almost a month behind in what was anticipated originally. Construction is not always a perfect process. So with. And, and this one.
Social media on that?
This one is, is particularly bad, the others are, are not too far off and, and are within acceptable reason. You know, we have to close roads sometimes, we have to keep workers safe, we have to keep the public safe, and that's part of reinvesting in, in infrastructure. You're gonna see, I think it's A through, I don't know, I or J or something, of payments that we're gonna approve to contractors working in Pleasant Grove City, and, and what a statement that is. We have some high-profile things that have happened, but there are many projects that, that aren't getting that attention because they're not interrupting roadways, but we, we are moving forward with a lot of investment in our infrastructure in Pleasant Grove. So that's a testament to the budget process and putting those citizen dollars to good use. So I, I thought I would maybe open this in a question format, so I could answer questions that you might have that are on your mind related to all the projects that are undergoing. It seems like it's a, an ongoing process to, to answer those questions. So I've, I've said we're busy, I've said things, I've said staff's doing great, and, and this all affects our day-to-day as well, but we're, we're making it through. Do you guys have any particular questions related to any of the specific projects or anything that's going on that I can answer?
Sorry, can you give me a timeline on Nathaniel?
Nathaniel's supposed to wrap up in our first week of October.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the way from like Valley View to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're replacing.
I'm not complaining, I'm not complaining.
The water main, no, I just.
Because it's a big project.
Water main, and, and then the roadway will go, it'll seemingly go quicker, because you get, do all the digging up and replacement and fixing, and it's kinda like painting your house. You really wanna make sure everything's buttoned up before you bring that asphalt out, and then it goes pretty quick.
Here's a question I've had from a couple people, it seems like the workers will come for a couple days, and then be gone for like a week. Is there a reason they don't const-, like, do they go to other projects, is this like normal?
Though, those workers have stayed out there and, and worked on that, but the length of the project maybe is, is where they're, they're up at the top, and then they move over here.
Down at the bottom, okay.
When you install water main, you have to chlorinate it and then wait, take a test, and then come back. So, so there's a couple of days there where they need to go work somewhere else. They're still, they're still on that project, just in a different section.
Okay.
And then they come and tie over the, the laterals, and, and it's a process. But particularly, I, I would compliment the work that's happened on Nathaniel, that excavation contractor's done really well. They've, they've taken care of things and gone over and above and beyond to, to make the project go smoothly.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Can I get an update on the four thousand north and nine hundred west intersection that we talked about in the past? It hasn't seemed to come up much recently.
Yes, so we are still in the early design phases of that. I brought back the four-way stop option. The survey crew was gonna go survey and put stakes in the ground at the intersection. That way the residents can see what the proposed alignment looks like right now. Once we have that proposed alignment and we can look in the field, it's easy for us as engineers to look at a plan and those lines and see the impacts, and we can visualize it, but it's not always easy for our residents, to whom we're gonna go ask for agreements eventually. And so to start the process of the agreement, we wanna put those stakes in the ground and say, this is where we see the roadway impacting your property. That way we can then start the negotiation process for right-of-way and disruption costs or, or cost to cure type agreements that are gonna need to happen up and down the corridor. So our anticipation is that that's already happened, I haven't driven up there, but that should have happened last week. Then we can take that feedback and create, I think there are about twenty or so properties along there, and start that right-of-way process, design, fine-tune parts of the, the project, and bid that out hopefully around January.
And then I know we discussed it, but I, maybe for the benefit of those who are watching, can you get us, give us an update on the, the pipe plant?
Sure.
And what's happening down there, timeline for when portions of that look like it'll be open?
Yeah. Every single discipline is out there working right now, so the, the courts are poured, the aprons were poured around the footsaw and basketball court, the coatings are supposed to go on this week, so they can have time to cure. The playground is currently being installed, the, the pump track is about half-done.
I saw there was asphalt or whatever, whatever that is.
Yeah, the, the whoop-dee part that's, that's, that's gonna be kind of more, more challenging for older riders is complete, and there's another portion that's up and around that that is yet to be completed, and they'll complete that in the next couple of weeks. The first pours for the skate park portion will be poured this week, so you'll start to see that shape up. And we're getting all the drain lines in for the splash pad. And the main feature on the splash, splash pad is set to show up in the next week or so. They give us about a five-day window on delivery. It's a, an impressive piece that will come in about four sections and be set into place at the, at that time. So.
Cool.
The Viking ship.
Is that the things that we see so far?
No, that's the playground equipment.
Oh, is it?
The Viking ship is in three sections of the ship and then a mast, and so we're, we're installing the drain portions of that.
Did you ever think, Mayor?
No.
I don't know, if there's a ship in the pipe. In the near future, if there's a time when we could go, when you think it would be smart, where we could go and take a look at it, I would like to see it in person, like maybe a BMX bike out there for Todd.
Yeah. We'll make it an e-bike.
I was a big BMXer, man, you know, yeah.
And, oh, and Diana, yeah, 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 yeah.
As long as, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring my rollerblade.
I was a big BMXer, but it had to be the swing, I don't know if you guys remember the swing.
You like a banana seat?
We'll talk later. Keep going.
As long as it's not an e-motorcycle. But the, the home is, 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 has been removed, and so that material will start being shaped into place to finish out that basin. And then the concrete is being placed up in the cemetery portion this week, and probably starting next week, the irrigation, the sprinklers for the cemetery portion will be starting to be installed. So I think, I think that's, that's about it. We've already mentioned that the lights are, are going up, and they're gonna look impressive and be a, a very nice amenity for the residents to be able to participate in those outdoor activities.
Do we, do we have a final updated design for the entry arch that was presented a couple of months ago?
That was a, a, a concept drawing, we don't have the proof, if you will, or the, the construction drawings of that yet. We are finalizing that, that probably won't be installed or put up until next spring. We'll get all the electrical conduit to it, yeah. It, it'll generally represent what you saw, but we may have heard that sometimes architects don't design what can be built, and so we wanna make sure that the fabricators of that type of item can build what, what was envisioned using just drawings.
Would anyone be opposed to a rendering of that arch with two twelve-foot skeletons that says Halloween Town as they enter the, the arch?
Yes. Yes, we, we have reservations.
This year?
I think on a temporary basis, do we, so we need Halloween hooks integrated into that?
Halloween Town, two skeletons welcoming them in.
We, we, I don't think we got a bid on that, do we have, that hasn't proceeded, it sounds like that's.
It, it has had a negotiated price, if you will, and we can bring that forward. It was, it was within the budget that we presented.
Yeah, I would like a tour, Scott, if we could set that up, that'd be great.
We'll work with the contractor and get something set up.
We're, we're constantly in the process of working with developers, too, with all the new stuff that's coming. We're, while we're refreshing infrastructure, there's always new infrastructure coming. We work with Daniel and Community Development on, on a lot of things and cross-coordinate there. And then we still have a lot of projects that are wrapping up that have some loose ends that we're still tying up. So we're not gonna skip a beat in any way, shape or form with things to accomplish within the Public Works Department. But I'm always happy to take any questions anytime that you guys might have as well. Anything else?
Thanks, Neil. Let's hear from the fire department, Chief.
Mayor, Council? Not a lot's going on, it's been pretty quiet the last little bit. We did have some, a couple openings, I offered one person, a couple people job offers, one accepted. He's one of our part-time guys that works for another department close to us, and he decided to come over and work with us full-time. Had another person, she decided she, she wanted to first, and then she kind of, I think, got a little cold feet and thought she might wanna stay, so she's gonna stay, so I still have one spot open, we'll be looking for that and hopefully get that filled in the next short time. Yeah, she works for another, she works for us part-time, and she got hired somewhere else, and she wanted to come back, but I think, I wanna make sure when they come over, they're, they're good with their decisions. I don't wanna, I hate pressuring people and doing certain things, I wanna make sure they were, you know, all in, and they were, it was good with them, so. She just got a little cold feet, which is great, which is fine, she's an awesome little girl, so. With that, we do have one bad and sad thing, is Laurel, our, our assistant, she decided to pick up a full-time job somewhere else, we're gonna lose our assistant, and so. Laurel, yeah, she, she called me last Wednesday, I was on my way to Swiss Days, so I was gone all weekend long, and had a little talk with her, but she'd been looking here and there, but she decided to accept this job for a private company, working somewhere else, so. Well, a little hole in our, in our department for a little while till we get that filled, it's kind of a, takes a special person to work with a bunch of fire guys in the front there, so we'll put that out there and do some interviews over the next few weeks and get that filled, but. And that, everything's going good, just kinda moving along and, you know, waiting for stuff to happen, so.
Okay, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Hi, Council and Mayor, we have a couple projects going on. As you guys know, let me see, Tabitha's Way, so made it for their business license, meaning they're almost at the end of the, of the building process. They don't have a.
Who is?
Tabitha's, Tabitha's Way.
Oh, yeah.
Closer to the park, so they're, they don't have a sea bow yet, so they're in the final stage of things, but it means we're getting there, okay? Was it two weeks ago, we received an application for Fat Cats, so we're reviewing Fat Cats. It's about eight movie theater rooms, we're talking about twenty-two bowling lanes, pretty similar to the one in Bluffdale. So we, we're working on review, and it's on the review, so we have a formal application to review the site plan for that one.
So it's the one like Bluffdale, not Saratoga Springs?
It's, it's, so we, you know, as soon as we received the application, I went to both, I took pictures of both, I took my city planner there, and we just realized it's, the outside's exactly the same as the one in, in Bluffdale. But we, so we haven't given the first round of comments yet, so we're working on, on our comments yet. We, they're gonna receive some comments from us regarding the site plan, regarding the, the, the design standards or so on. But I have a formal application from, from that project to come to us.
So movie theater?
This one's gonna have movie theater, it's gonna have bowling arcade, it doesn't have the, the mini golf, it doesn't have the mini golf. Say that again?
What about laser tag?
I, I don't, it doesn't have laser tag either, those are the ones that I remember, I remember twenty-two bowling lanes, I remember the arcade, I remember the, it has seven movie theaters and one tiny one, I guess it's for private events or for something like that, so. That was the one that we are reviewing by the, by the, by the freeway, okay? So some of the fun projects that, that we have, they also, Fat Cats, their main offices, as you guys know, they're moved to Pleasant Grove, so they're part of, of Pleasant Grove, but now they will have, pardon?
Are there headquarters here?
Mm-hmm, they're in St. John's Preparers. Yeah, and Costa Vista has a, is gonna have a big office here as well. Maybe not the headquarters, but a big office here, but the site plan is exciting, as we, those are the big projects that we like to review, we have everybody. We have everybody looking into it, giving their comments, and probably in the next couple of weeks, they will, will give them the, the, the final round of comments for, for. That's why I'm Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the rap sheet, I don't have hard copies, but the new one was just barely updated, so if you guys log into it, uh, probably I can go grab hard copies in the, in the break, but it's updated. They have applied for a tenant improvement, so only to work, to do work on the inside, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Daniel.
Anytime.
Okay, David. There's always something going on in HR.
Denise will be our resident bowler. Um, yes, there is always something going on in HR. A lot of times those are behind the scenes. So you heard there's a few openings, so you got a lot of interviews and backgrounds, orientation, all of that, so doing that. Couple of other things to be aware of. I sent an email on this, and I think some of you participated in this. But we just came to an end on our summer steps challenge. We had a lot of participants. We're tallying up everything. Some people were a little more diligent in actually tallying their steps. Congrats Eric. I know Eric made it over one million.
He was or he wasn't?
He was. And congrats to Eric.
I can't put mine in still.
You can put him in.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, reminder to everyone this week, put in, put in your steps. We're trying to get to our, our citywide goal of seventy-five million, um, those that participated. Um, so, yeah, there's a lot of steps there and there's a lot of employees that were impressive. Uh, we had multiple employees that had more than two million steps this summer, so pretty inspiring. Yeah, we also did a new program, um, this past quarter. Um, our intern Lauren helped, but we did a, a wellness bingo challenge. So I don't know if you saw that. We had a lot of activities, participating in the steps challenge, um, doing a webinar, financial consultation, going on a hike to the G or Battle Creek, trying some new recipes, going to lunch. Lots of activities, just trying to round out everyone's wellness. So we're excited to, to see those bingo cards coming in. And on September eighteenth, we're gonna do a lunch, give out all of the certificates for the steps challenge. Uh, we have some prizes, uh, for the bingo challenge too, that are gonna be given out on September eighteenth. Um, and I think that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Anybody got anything? Any questions for David? Okay. Denise, how's the, our financial world going on your side?
Uh, budget got submitted to CFOA on Thursday, so that's super exciting. So, yep, just now working on audit.
Okay. Wendy, do you have anything for us? Tina? Okay, Kyler?
Yeah, I have a few things. Uh, first off, tomorrow's the Utah League of Cities and Towns convention starts. I don't know if any of you are going. If you are, use it as a time to get to know your other elected officials, create those relationships. Now is the time to start planning for the session that will be here quickly. And we know what some of the bills that are gonna come out are gonna be looking at. We wanna make sure we're ready. The road fee could be one of them. Well, it will be one of them, so we wanna make sure we're ready to go. Uh, second, October eleventh, we will be a .gov domain. We will be PG City Utah.gov. Now, we do not wanna wait till then to roll out the website, so you will see the website open up either later next week or early the following week.
We'll just do a mass domain for PGCity.com and switch everything over and.
Dot gov.
Well, no, somebody searches now, dot or .org.
Dot, yeah, so there'll be a redirect, yep. So there'll be a redirect for as long as we want, so for your emails, the website. Um, we'll also be working on our interior templates, that documents that we have that have our .org, um, and we'll go from there.
Well done.
Lastly, um, on a more personal note, uh, next week is Patriot Day. I just hope we can all reflect on, on what happened that day. You know, sometimes it's in the back of our mind, but it's an important day to remember.
Great reminder. What about week one, uh, results?
What?
Week one football results.
Oh, yes, um, you know, Utah looked really good. Uh, BYU even looked decent, so I'm excited. Utah schools are doing really good, you know?
What happened to the Florida team?
Did you pick Florida?
Uh, Florida? I'm not a fan of Florida.
Okay.
He's a Seminole.
Florida State?
They did even worse, so.
Okay, just wondered if you were aware.
Okay, Scott, do you have anything, calendar items for us?
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have the Panera Bread ribbon cutting, uh, this Thursday at eleven AM. Um, and I think that's, uh, all I have on my calendar, at least for you guys. And the Panera Bread one just came out today, so I did send you an appointment so that you would have that. We do have Heritage Days on the ninth, um, that's from five PM to dusk. Uh, and I'm sure Stacy, when she gets here, we're, Stacy here, she'll give us an update on whatever activities we need to be aware of there. For our, our meeting in two weeks, right now we just have one agenda item. It's part of the work session and that is our PG Cares. Um, Nicole with PG Cares, they wanna do a, a student spotlight. I don't know if they, I can't remember if it was once a month or on a, on a regular basis anyway, so they're gonna do that student spotlight, uh, on the seventeenth. And, and I'm sure we'll have a few more items, but that's all that we have for right now. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll start down here with Eric. You got your list?
I have nothing. He already took the Panera, so we're good.
Sorry, I'm still in Eric's thunder.
This is, this is craziness right now.
I know, it's that new standard.
Okay, so this was cool yesterday. We went, we couldn't decide on what to eat, so we went down to the new strip mall down there in the Grove. And there was Wayback Burgers, Panera, smoked taco and Wingstop. All good. All right there. We decided on Wayback Burgers. The line was almost out the door. It was delicious, so good. And that's just fun to be able to stay here in Pleasant Grove and have multiple options. And I was like, hey, whatever everyone, everyone wants, just go grab something. And that's just fun. Like, I love that. So, and really, really good food at, at Wayback Burgers, so we're gonna try Wingstop next time. But just so that all these places are coming in and we can keep our sales tax here and support these local businesses, so it's awesome.
Very good.
Yeah, that's all.
Ditto.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything. It's, yeah, because I've, Sid, I've done the same thing. Um, and, you know, across the street, you can do Slim Chickens, you can do, I mean, it's just, that's what we talked about many years ago when we talked about economic development. And, um, Fat Cats, it's just exciting times in PG. So appreciate all the city does to facilitate all that.
Okay, Councilmember Rogers?
Nope, no, not today.
Okay.
Mayor, if we, if we have a few minutes, is Stacy on it? Do you know?
I texted her, just wrapping up the program.
Okay. Yeah, if, we can go through the agenda and just kinda.
Okay.
Get that situated. In fact, I would recommend maybe we start with item ten A, which is not a public hearing. Um, this is our head start agreement and we'll have Tina, um, explain to you, are you prepared to do that? Um, what's in that agreement and then when we get to our council, uh, meeting, then we can just kinda skip the formality and just get to the action item.
Very good.
This is just basically a renewal of a lease that we, um, entered into in twenty seventeen. And it expired, and so we're doing a new lease. We upped the lease payments by, uh, a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars. They, we're paying forty-five hundred a year and I think it's six thousand now. Uh, the other difference is that, um, they would like permission to sub-lease one of the classrooms for an extended day, daycare slash preschool. They only go till like four o'clock and they have a lot of their customers, clients, patrons that need extended care because they don't get off work that early. So there's a, a woman who has a five oh one C three, I think. She's gonna be a nonprofit. Um, and she's gonna lease part of their classroom so that she can be there till six or six thirty. So that's really the only two differences. We've required insurance, proof of insurance to be listed as a, um, additional insured by both parties on their property insurance. Um, those are the only main changes.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Tina, while you're up, do you wanna just explain nine A as well? This is a public hearing, so we'll have to re-go through the presentation, but Tina can give you a, a background on it.
So nine A is a little bit complicated and I apologize, the wrong copy with the exhibits was put in the electronic packet, but I amended it today and the correct copy is in the packet for the mayor to sign. Um, this is a, uh, land swap deal between the Nymer family and the Trust for Public Lands and Pleasant Grove City. The Trust for Public Lands will be buying a large portion of the Nymer property that's up at the top of two hundred South near our secondary water tank and the entrance to our Kiwanis Park. The Forest, US Forest Service will be buying a portion of that after the Trust for Public Lands acquires it. The city will also be purchasing a small portion of the property after the Trust for Public Lands acquires it. The US Forest Service was concerned that they wanted to guarantee before they closed the deal that the city would grant them access over our two hundred South property outside the bounds of where the pavement is. Um, and so this is a, basically a preemptive easement in favor of the Trust for Public Lands for access over, uh, parcel number fourteen zero four four zero nine four. And then, cause I had to type it a few times. Um, and then also over, uh, the parcel where our, um, our, uh, water tank is. Uh, these, these won't be recorded actually, even though we're going to grant them to give the US Forest Service, um, comfort that they will have access once they acquire the property. But they will not be recorded until the deal is finalized with the Trust for Public Lands. Does that make sense?
So is, is the easement subject to and conditional upon closing on the other deal?
Yeah, we just won't, we just won't record it. It's in the resolution that it won't be recorded until after, um, the, the deal's done. Um, I didn't put that in the easement grant itself because we're actually granting it to the Trust for Public Lands, not the US Forest Service. But it just, we just, everybody understands it's not gonna be recorded until, until it's done. Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we'll have, um, Daniel go over item nine B since we have.
But well, on, so on nine A, when you do the presentation during the public hearing, we'll see a map of the actual easement. That'll be accurate, okay?
He's gonna pull it up and I'll show you the parcel numbers and, and where the road goes.
I will show a map too, and when it's my presentation, that will help us a lot to understand. But a couple of months ago, we did a rezone for, uh, point two three, uh, from the RR to the R one ten because the Vigilot family was gonna, uh, create a new lot, okay? So I had a plat application where they were trying to section this portion, a, a new land, and a rezone because the new lot was gonna be smaller. Well, I had both applications at the same time and we brought the, the, the rezone, the rezone got approved. So that section of the land is right now in the R one ten. However, as we are working with the applicant, there's some problems with the plat because the county did not allow them to, uh, to, to have frontage to a new, to a new lot. So the plat is not happening anymore. So since the plat is not happening anymore and we cannot have a split zone, this, uh, staff, so this is a, a, an application from the staff, we applied to revert the, the zone. So we rezoned it back to what it was, uh, because for the time being, the applicant is not gonna be able to develop into a lot. So it's, it's, uh, at reverse. We went from RR, we cut off a section to, to put it in R one ten and I was going back to RR. That's what it is. So when we, ah, and there's a portion in the back that is added to because grandma didn't wanna mow the lawn that, that far away. So that's why she took a section out, so that's what it will be, okay? With the map, I think it will be more, uh, clear once I present it.
Do we need to reschedule Stacy for another day?
Uh, no, she, I just called the library and she said, oh, I thought it was five thirty. So she's, she just ran out the door.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just, uh.
That might be her right there.
Hang tight here for a few minutes and. So, what's that? Oh, did he? Oh, really? Health issues or what? So the two other council members, I mean, the two county commissioners will appoint somebody to take his spot.
Mayor, if we just wanna take a recess till she gets here so that we can.
Like, uh, motion to recess?
Make a motion to recess?
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.